Total Info Sports. And Simply Organic Extract select baking favorites through November 16th. Plus an extra 10% off for Prime members while supplies last. See more on the Whole Foods Market app.
ABC Tonight. Your favorite artists are back together for country music's biggest night.
This is incredible.
The CMA Awards with performances by country's biggest stars. Eric Church, Miranda Lambert, Jimmy Allen, Blake Shelton, and collaborations you'll only see here. Jason Aldean and Carrie Underwood, Chris Young with Kane Brown, Luke Bryan hosts. The CMA Awards live tonight at 8 on 6 ABC and stream next day on Hulu.
If you're even thinking about renovating, you have to check out the Houzz website and app. That's H-O-U-Z-Z. More than 65 million people are using Houzz because it's the best tool out there to help your project turn out right. Why? When you hire a pro on Houzz, they can show you in 3D using Houzz tools exactly how your finished project will look. So for remodeling made easy, just go to Houzz. That's H-O-U-Z-Z. And find a local pro to give you a great home and a great experience.
You know when you order a new video game, or a golf club, or a blender, and then it arrives at your door, you get a little thrill. Imagine how much more thrilling it is when you order a new car. With Nissan at Home, you can shop for the perfect ride and order it without ever having to go anywhere. Sure beats a golf club or a blender. Buy a new car entirely online with Nissan at Home. Deliver direct from dealer to driveway. Thrill starts here. Services may vary. Participating dealers subject to a flick of a lossy dealer for details.
I know everything there is to know about running a coffee shop, but for small business insurance, I need my State Farm agent. They make sure my business stays piping hot. And I stay cool and confident. See, they're small business owners too, so they know how to help you best. State Farm is in your corner and on it. Like a good neighbor, State Farm is there. Call your local State Farm agent for a quote today.
Before I started using Don Platt.
Good evening and welcome to the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting for November 10th, 2021. As usual, take a moment of silence and I will just ask that you remember again, those who've been affected by this horrible virus and their families, and those on the front lines, the doctors, nurses, EMTs, police, fire, all who answer the call, called to duty unselfishly. And those everyday important essential workers, the garbage collectors, the supermarket workers, food servers, just to name a few. And here in our township, our management, our administrative staff, our Public Works Department, together they keep our township running. Let us support our local businesses the best we can, and please don't forget to be generous. Most of all, treat people with respect and kindness, even those that you may disagree with. As we start to come out of this pandemic, together as a community, we will be stronger when this is over. Also, I'd like to say that tomorrow is Veterans Day, and let us remember, also remember those men and women who served, and those who gave the ultimate sacrifice so we could sit here tonight at this meeting. If you know a veteran, thank them. Hey, if you can, give them a hug, even if it's virtually. If you will bow your heads. Stand with the board for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lewis, any changes to the agenda tonight?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No special actions. We'll go into our first session of public comment. Anyone who wants to make a public comment of anything that is not on the agenda right now, please feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, seeing none. We have authorization to advertise the 2022 budget. And this is up for discussion among the board members. So whoever wants to chime in, please, please do so.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose we come up with a plan that does not raise taxes. I have some ideas. I don't know how much I'm going to detail if it's a foregone conclusion that's going to happen, the current budget's going to get hung. So in the interest of time, if you think you have the votes for the current budget, we don't have to discuss the no tax increase budget.
Well, as a matter of fact, I did send around an email today, and it was a proposal of which wouldn't raise taxes. I don't know if you saw it or not, Kyle.
I did not.
Okay. My proposal would be, I think the budget is otherwise okay. It's, it has everything in there accounted for that we're, we need in regards to supplying for the police and personnel that is needed. So I think that we're okay in that regards. But to eliminate the 1.5 increase in taxes for the Fire Protection Fund, I see that we have a, we're going to have a proposed general fund balance of 1.6. My suggestion would be to take some money out of the general fund and pay off the tax increase. And in some, I think in some cases, Mr. Lewis worked up some numbers of where it would still drop us to 8.6 in the percent of the general fund instead of, I believe, 10%. But it would eliminate taxes. I think what we have, have looked forward to is we do have the relief fund money that will be coming in. And also, in some cases, I think Mr. Lewis goes conservative on his figures, so we may have an increase in EIT tax, maybe transfer tax, that will replenish the 1.5 mils to the Fire Protection Fund. So that was my proposal. I don't know if, Mr. Lewis, do you have those final numbers that we were looking at?
Yeah, so what the Fire Fund was, was proposed initially in the Fire Associate, I'm sorry, the Fire Protection Fund, was a millage to provide the NFA with an additional $330,000. The hiring of a deputy chief in the department, and an allocation of $150,000 towards the Fire Association Capital Fund for future purchases. What was discussed with Mr. Calaveras this afternoon, pursuant to his email of earlier today, was to allocate approximately $350,000 to the general fund as a transfer to the Fire Protection Fund, which would then replace the revenue that is lost by removing the 1.5 mils in taxes, and also to eliminate the $150,000 contribution towards the Fire Association Capital Fund, which would leave a fund balance of about 8.61%.
Can I ask a question about what happens after the budget is hung? I mean, are you proposing to change the budget?
Yes, because this, this change would constitute more than 25% change to that category. So in order to make this change happen without having to re-advertise, I would ask for a motion tonight to amend the budget to include those changes, and then we would, we would advertise the budget.
We haven't advertised it yet.
No, we haven't advertised it yet.
So we can make any changes we want right now?
Provide, right, correct.
What happens after it's advertised? What kind of changes can be made?
10% overall or 25% in any major category.
Wait, is that increase only or?
Increase, increase. Revenues or expenditures, increase.
So we can decrease anything we want?
Correct.
So I'm in favor of getting it advertised as soon as possible, however you decide to do. One of the things, though, that I was interested in is talking about these funds, is to establish a roadwork capital fund, so that, say you have the $300,000 line item for roadwork. I would like that to, I would like us to create a capital fund, so that if there's any money left over in that fund, it stays in that fund and does not get to be used to offset other expenses, so that we can try to pave more roads in the future. The other thing I thought that we might add is something that the Video Goal put forward regarding streaming via YouTube of these meetings, the Board of Supervisors' planning and zoning commissions. And I think the proposal from Video Goal for that was like $4,900. I don't know if you want to put that in the budget now, but that would be probably, that number would probably be under 10% of anything, right? Mr. Sander?
Yeah, it would be, yes.
So, I mean, whatever budget you want to put out there, that's fine, and we could talk about the details of changes that people want at the next meeting, I guess, with further input from the public.
Yeah, as long as the 10% and 25% numbers are not met as far as increases go, because then you'd have to re-advertise the budget.
Right.
I'm on board with Mr. Calaveras' proposal there.
And my comments were along the same lines as, as the chairman's. Based on my reading of the, of the manager's budget, there were some, there were some revenues that I thought we could have put in there higher, but there were also a couple that I thought should have been lower, so it all evens out. And I, and I, and over the, over the years, I've learned to appreciate the township manager's conservatism and making sure that we end up better than what we budgeted for. And sometimes you do that by making sure you, your revenues are higher than what you budgeted, and your expenses are lower than you budgeted. I also, I mean, I do, I did want to say that I, I support the budgeted expenses that are in there. And if I, if I heard right, we were maybe going to remove the $150,000. But, so I'd like to talk about that in the future, but I'd be okay with this budget with the tax increase, increase, or without the tax increase, of course. Without is better. But I just don't want to take any risks in being able to, you know, provide the, our emergency services and the NFA for, with what they need to, you know, guarantee public safety going forward. So if I can be convinced of that, and I think we all share that view. The other, I guess the only other thing that I would say is that the American Relief Fund does offer us some additional ways of, I think of, I think they'll eventually be approved expenses to, for volunteer recruitment and retention. I will be, I think, you know, there's a few other things in our budget, like the accounting software, maybe the police CODI system, some of those things that might be reimbursable by the American Relief Fund program. And I would hope that that's something that we can do either way. Especially if we don't have a tax increase, we can pay ourselves back with some of those funds. So I'm okay, just to get it out to the public, I'd be okay with it going with the tax increase and we remove it, which we can always take it out.
Mr. Lewis, just to be clear, we're not, we're not abandoning Fire Protection Fund or service. We're just shifting money so that we don't have to raise taxes to place into that. So, I mean, it's, just because we're taking it away and not raising the taxes doesn't mean we're abandoning fire protection. We're still, we're still going to provide whatever we can to the fire protection. It's just that we're eliminating that $500,000 in a tax increase, that's all.
Got it, yeah. I didn't mean to be unclear about that, I'm sorry.
John, anything?
No, I would just say the same thing should apply to roadwork. If we would have a fund for that, that would be better, but that could be down the road. We can discuss that, no pun intended. Also, can you tell me what happens when the new board is reorganized with, in terms of what changes can be made in a budget even after it's been approved?
Mr. McDoer, in the month of January, following a municipal election of which we just had, the board may amend the budget and the tax levy that was adopted to allow the township to meet the budget. You have to publish notice of the amended budget for 10 days inspection. The amended budget cannot increase overall by more than 10% or any, increase any line item by more than 25%, and it must be adopted before February 15th.
Thank you. Mr. Sander, does the, the request of opening the budget have to, have to pass a majority of the board?
Yes.
Well, if the, if the new supervisor taking, taking the seat wants to open, reopen the budget, then technically three of us have to say yes, that's okay. David?
I like the idea, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a lot of thought in terms of where we are and what we want to do for our township and our residents. And I also think a lot of what we can do in terms of increasing revenues, we can find that, I know I spoke with the Park and Rec Director, and she's charged with trying to make sure that she continues to increase revenues there, and I know she's really passionate about doing it as we come out of COVID. And I know we had some concerns in terms of what it would look like as far as like our economy's concerned, but as we continue to go, come out of it, and supply chains start to get back to where it needs to be, and people get back to working, I think that we should see some really, really nice revenues coming in. So I'm comfortable with your suggestion, because I think going on in the future, it looks like we're going to be in good shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, since we kind of amended the figures, what would a proper motion be for this budget?
Mr. Chairman, the appropriate motion would be authorization to advertise the 2022 budget, subject to adding a provision for $350,000 for the Fire Protection Fund and eliminating the one and a half mil tax to the Fire Protection Fund, and eliminating the $150,000 contribution to the Fire Association Capital Fund, from the Fire Protection Fund.
Do I have such a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion from the board?
Let me clarify that the 150,000 for the future purchase of a fire apparatus, that, that we could do alternately during the year via resolution? From, and from the general fund or whatever?
At any, at any point, the way I understand it, yes, the board could make, put together a resolution and transfer whatever money in between funds.
Yeah, it wouldn't have to be 150.
Except during the first three months of the fiscal, of the next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, a call to question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Well, we can hang the budget. What's our, what's our time process from here, Mr. Sander?
Well, we have to advertise it, and 20 days has to pass from when the advertisement appears before the board can consider adopting the proposed budget as the final budget. So however that works out on your calendar, meeting calendar, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you. One question, but on the November 23rd meeting, we can still discuss it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Sure, you can absolutely discuss the issue, but the proposed budget will be advertised as such.
I mean, we could, we could actually talk about the budget up until 31st of December. This, this just puts us in the time limit of having a advertised budget within the timely matter.
That's correct.
And this will be posted on the township website?
That's correct.
Great.
Okay, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. I don't see any committees here tonight, so we'll go into board members. I have nothing to say right now. I'll go to Vice Chairman Mr. Fisher.
First of all, Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans. I know my father and my two uncles and my brother-in-law were all, all veterans. Thank them posthumously. The jointer did not meet last week. They were awaiting some findings from the Bucks County Planning Commission on the comprehensive Guess the only other thing I would say, well, let me just mention the housing of the new fire truck last week. It was, I couldn't stay for the whole ceremony, but they fed me and they gave me a nice T-shirt. So it was, it was a really nice event. I meant to bring that T-shirt along for visual aid, but what can I say? And then, lastly, I wanted to congratulate Newtown Township and I guess all over the county. It was a good, good turnout for Election Day. We all, obviously, we all have our preferred outcomes, and some of them are still undecided. But we, winning or losing, it, it is a difficult thing to put yourself out there to run for office. So I would thank all those who ran for office, and thank, thank everyone who provides a public service that way.
Thank you. Mr. Mac?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Environmental Advisory Council met this past Monday, and EAC member Elaine McCarron presented results of her fact-finding conversations with local business owners with regard to single-use plastics. Mostly, she spoke to restaurants, dry cleaners, and so forth. And the responses were mostly in favor of replacing single-use plastics with paper, since many restaurants are already doing this in other townships, which have put some sort of restrictions on that already. The Ms. McCarron and other members plan to continue with these conversations and would like to present their results to the Board of Supervisors, perhaps at a future work session. I know there's one in December 13th. And also, the Technology Committee had already asked to make their presentation about how to improve the township website based on the analytics report that they received. So maybe we can put these two together in one work session. It may be too soon to do that for the 15th of this month, but maybe the 13th of December, if that's okay with the, with the board.
John, I'm, I'm not that well-versed on the usage of plastic, but what's it mean, single-use plastic?
It's like when you get a bag from getting a lunch takeout. Today I went to, it's not Quiznos, what was that? One of the hoagie places, and they put it in a plastic bag. I can't use that bag for anything else, basically. I can't even use it for garbage, so I have to throw it out. They could simply use paper bags, for example, and then those can be recycled. And I know certain restaurants in town, the, the one that serves chicken, what's it called? On North Sycamore?
Lovebird.
Lovebird. They have all cardboard and paper, and I think it's because they also have a outlet in, in Doylestown, which already has some kind of, of a ban. And I know that other businesses in Newtown support this, like McCaffery's and so on. So they would just like to continue their conversations with businesses and come to the board to report their results of the, what they found.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the Park and Rec report for today. Registered today for the following upcoming programs, which are starting soon. There's a Saturday morning art series, Fundamentals of Investing. There's Exploring Archery, and a Prince and Princess Ballet for preschoolers. And just want to remind everyone to follow Newtown Fund, @NewtownFund on social media. Also, the annual Holiday Bazaar and Craft Fair will take place Saturday, November 20th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and please visit the Facebook page for details. Also, our candy cane hunt will be held Saturday, December 4th, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Roberts Bridge Park. And again, newtownfund.com for more information and to register. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oxley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to report on Economic Development Committee. We were, we were canceled last meeting, but I did attend a Newtown Business Commons Association meeting, or an event, excuse me, where, you know, we discussed different changes to the business commons potentially. Show shared that with some of the members there, and, you know, we were, it was at Newtown Brewery, so I don't know if everybody was engaged or if they were drinking the beer, but, you know, I was happy to actually share with them that the positive thoughts and process that we put into play so far from the Economic Development Committee, from the Planning Commission, and, you know, we talked about, you know, grants for, we applied for the grants for the sidewalks to be put in potentially. So that was a really nice event that they put on, and I'm looking forward to attending more Newtown Business Commons Association meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing. Mr. Sander, we have a public hearing?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. It would be appropriate for you to ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, do I have such a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions from the board on this public hearing?
Just opening it, yeah.
Just opening it? Okay. So I'll just call the question, all those in favor of opening this public hearing? Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. To advise the board accordingly, this is a proposed ordinance that amends the Joint Municipal Zoning Ordinance to revise the introductory paragraph to the Conservation Management District to eliminate a reference that was inadvertently left over and has been in there since 2008, namely, a reference to the Use Performance subdivision. Previously- Previously, a performance subdivision was a specific use and it was allowed or permitted in the Conservation Management District. In 2008, the jointure municipalities removed a performance subdivision from the zoning ordinance. However, it was recently discovered that reference to a performance subdivision was contained within the introductory paragraph to the Conservation Management District. So the only thing that this ordinance does, it just restates the introductory paragraph to the Conservation Management District without reference to a performance subdivision. And that's the ordinance that is before you this evening.
Okay. And this would have to go through the jointure, correct?
Correct. It, it has been reviewed by all three planning commissions. It has been authorized to be advertised by all three townships, and it has been advertised for tonight's public hearing, so it's before this board for action.
Okay. Are we the originators of this ordinance?
I don't believe so.
I think it was Upper Magfield.
Yeah.
It was discussed at a jointure meeting, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was Upper Magfield as well.
All right. And what action do you, do we need tonight?
Well, after discussion by the board and the taking of public comment, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to enact the ordinance JMZO number 2021-01.
All right. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any questions from the board on this ordinance?
I have a stupid question, although it doesn't, not relevant anymore. What is a performance subdivision? Can you explain it in 25 words or less?
I believe, and there might be, Jerry might know better.
No, I'm sorry.
I believe, I believe it was a mixed use of, it was a residential use that had different types of residences within one development. In other words, part of it would be townhouses, part of it would be singles, part of it could be condos, et cetera. I believe it was a mixed-use residential development.
Okay. Thanks. Wasn't that a, what was it, a B-16?
Fourteen?
Fourteen?
B-14?
Okay.
B-14.
Why didn't they, why didn't they just call it eliminating B-14 out of the, a bit much simpler?
Well, I guess the drafter of the ordinance wanted to be super thorough and say, this is how the introductory paragraph to the CM District is going to read, and they said it all out here in this ordinance, rather than just saying, reference to performance subdivision is removed.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I think the lawyers make more money when they do it that way.
Well, he just, it wasn't 25 words or less.
Not this lawyer.
Any questions from the public on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none of called question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
And it would be appropriate to have a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion a second. Any questions from the board on closing the hearing? Okay, hearing none of called question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Sander.
Thank you.
Okay. No land development tonight. Reports of officials. Engineers report.
Thank you. First item on the agenda for us tonight is the DBRPC Regional Streetlight Procurement Letter of Intent. The DBRPC program, I provided a fact sheet, I believe, to the board in their packet. This is just a regional program that assists municipalities with the conversion over to LED streetlights. So basically, there's four phases in regards to this program. The first phase is the feasibility stage, where they, DBRPC contracts with Keystone Lighting, and they provide the township with a no-cost feasibility study that shows, they'll take a look at the existing bills and provide this study that shows, you know, future savings and costs associated with the program. So tonight, we are looking for the township to improve the, the letter of intent to be included in this program and to authorize that feasibility study. Whether the township decides to move on beyond that, that will be up to you once you see the feasibility study and the results of that. So essentially, tonight, we're just looking at the letter of intent for that feasibility study.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the letter of intent?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Seven.
Okay, a motion a second. Any questions from the board?
So they're going to, they're going to, after the feasibility study is complete, they'll come and make a presentation to the board?
They will, yep.
Okay. And we don't, that doesn't cost us anything?
It doesn't, no.
Okay.
I was going to say, that's the same question. It doesn't cost us anything, except for maybe a little staff time putting it together, some responses.
Exactly. Yep. They, they sort of outlined what they need, and it, it seems pretty simple in terms of just providing bills and maybe some additional information, but it should all be, you know, readily available for the township to provide.
From the township's perspective, would you be gathering any information in regards to maybe other townships that have this service and their cost and their rate, rate of return on their investment?
Yep. We'll, we'll be reaching out to others in the area, and then we can get that information to the township as well.
Great. Any other questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none of called question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
Next item we have is Financial Security Release Number Three for the Three Penns Trail Project. Based on our inspection of the work completed, we recommend that the township release the amount of $176,972.50 to the developer.
Okay. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Seven.
Okay, a motion a second. Any questions from the board on this? From the public? Seeing none of called question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You know, I'm always interested in the lower Donington Road Trail.
Yep.
Can you give us a little update on that?
Yep, sure. So we've been working with the contractor to review their material submittals. It's pretty standard, you know, prior to construction. There have been some issues with the contractor procuring materials. There's some supply chain issues that everyone is pretty much well aware of, whether you're doing personal projects or things of that nature. So we're work, the contractor's working to, to get those materials. We've requested another, an updated schedule from them, so hopefully we'll get that soon and we can provide that update to the township.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Solicitors Report. Mr. Sander?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The sole item on our report this evening is consideration by the board of the Noxious Weeds Ordinance. If the board will recall at its last meeting, the board reviewed this ordinance and authorized it to be advertised for consideration this evening. It has been advertised. The one change that the board asked that be made to the ordinance that was reviewed previously was that the fine for violation of the ordinance was, used to say, not more than $1,000. That was from the old ordinance. There was a significant amount of discussion about that at your last meeting, and the board authorized it to be revised to, the violator shall pay a fine of not less than $50, nor more than $250. So that change was made to the ordinance, and the ordinance is before you for a motion, if the board is of a mind, to adopt the Noxious Weed Ordinance.
Okay. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion a second. Since we discussed a lot about this at the last meeting, it seems like the only revision is the, the fee structure. Is that correct, Mr. Sander?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Is the board okay, or did they want to go back into, I hate to use the pun, but back into the weeds to discuss this, or just go right to a vote on, on the ordinance with that change to the fee structure?
Just, just thinking about the weed and how it can be very, like, dangerous and so forth, and obviously, we, as a township, would notify said owner that they should remove this, and they ignore it. I don't understand why there should be a range, right? I think it should just be one flat fee, and that should be it. But I'm open to hearing anyone that has a difference of opinion. I don't know why there should be a range. Should be, I would say it's just a 250 flat. If someone's already been notified and they've ignored it, then I think that would, should be where it is.
I think that was discussed at the last meeting, like, the first low numbers, your first attempt to get them to do something. If they didn't, you then would have the option to come in with another higher fine or whatever, because otherwise, the only other option would be to bring them to court, and we certainly don't want to do that. And frankly, most of this has to do with educating the public, rather than going out there and policing this and trying to find people. So I, I think it's a good idea to have a range.
And my comment is, just to be practical about it, we've advertised this once. Of course, we can advertise it again if there's a change, but, you know, just to go ahead and proceed with it.
Let me, the 50 or no more than 250, would that mean, and I don't want, again, read too much into this, it's okay with me, but would that mean if there's a second offense, it would go to 100, the third offense to 150? I mean, are we talking about that sort of tier fine, until they hit the 250 mark? I mean, that's, that's five violations.
Well, I don't know if that was the intent, but I think it's up to the discretion of the township.
Well, part right. This ordinance does not say that the first violation shall be a fine of $50, the second violation shall be a fine of $100, et cetera. Doesn't say that. It just provides the range of not less than 50, nor more than 250, and that decision is made by the district judge, based on, following a hearing, what the district judge feels is the severity of the violation.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public on this? Okay, seeing none of called question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
That concludes our report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General Fund balance as of this evening is $4,682,779.
And the reason for such a high balance, is there?
Last month, in November, we had our quarterly returns on the earned income tax, which is, four times a year, we get a, a rather large contribution of EIT.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Plan expirations before the board with no action required. This evening, we have Chief Hearn to give his monthly police report. Evening, Chief.
Evening, sir. Evening, board members. October's police report, we documented 1,669 calls for service. We logged 20,600 miles on our patrol vehicles, had 11 on arrest, including four DUIs, three narcotics, one simple assault domestic-related, one forgery for a detective's investigation, one protection from abuse violation, and one, one at subject on a felony warrant out of North Carolina. There were 11 new cases referred to the Detective Division, and four crime scenes were processed. We had 80 traffic crashes for the month of October, including 10 injuries, 25 non-injuries, and a significant number of deer, 24. We had 142 traffic citations issued with 141 warnings. Notable jobs. We actually unfortunately had two auto pedestrians struck, one on 1014 at Richborough and Hanover. It's a 14-year-old bicyclist that was, rode into the intersection and into the side of a vehicle. And on 1022, we had an autopad on Sycamore Street where a 57-year-old was struck by a northbound vehicle. That investigation is ongoing. So motorists, please, state law, yield to pedestrians in a crosswalk, and the pedestrians, please cross in a crosswalk, not mid-block. There was a theft investigation on South State Street of the Bus Depot where four batteries were stolen, and selected enforcement. We had two truck enforcement details, one in the borough and one on the bypass, resulting in 28 inspections, 10 citations, 14 warnings. Four vehicles were placed out of service, and one vehicle was towed from the scene. Like I said, the significant incidents on October 22nd was the autopad on Sycamore Street was significant. It was closed down Sycamore Street for several hours while we did our investigation. The male was transported to St. Mary's Hospital in critical condition. The investigation is continuing. Public service announcements, we have an auto deer crash rise. Please keep it in mind. Slow down. Use your high beams if you possibly can without a car approaching you. Don't swerve on the oncoming lanes and slow your speed. There is a deer hunt in Tyler State Park scheduled for December 1st with 150 maximum hunters, just keep in mind of that. Our drug take-back event on October 23rd was successful. We're collecting 125 pounds of unwanted drugs, and also, in addition to that, we had 319 pounds of unwanted drugs since our last collection from our drop box in our police headquarters. Fraud is also continuing, so the bottom line is, if it's too good to be true, it probably is. So don't give out your personal information, and don't be scanned by offers on a computer or on a telephone. Also, watch your bank and account statements for any fraudulent activities and notify your banking company. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the chief?
Yes, Chief. Very good advice, as usual, and regarding the accident on North Sycamore Street, I know that the Newtown Police Department has tried several strategies to prevent speeding, which is probably the major cause of these incidents of hitting pedestrians. I know you used decoy police cars, speed indicator lights, et cetera, and I noted in the public works, redid the crosswalk painting on your recommendation. But do you think there's anything else that can be done at that location? I'm thinking, for example, when I'm passing Chandler Hall, there's a lot more emphasis that this is a pedestrian crossing, they have blinking yellow lights and so on, to warn, give more warning that this is a pedestrian crossing. And I've noticed that there's been, since I've been a supervisor, several accidents involving pedestrians on that corner, and I know that some businesses there would like to see some more done to make it safer, but I'm not quite sure what we can do. Do you have any advice on that?
Yeah, just a couple of points, John. Number one, most of the collisions aren't speed-related to renter tentative drivers and/or pedestrians crossing where they shouldn't be crossing. That's probably the most, it's not a speed issue on Sycamore. From our data, I ran a self-study, study out at that location earlier this year, and out of 521 vehicles passing through that street, only 28 were going over the speed limit. So it's not a significant number of speed resulting in that. The two auto pedestrian strikes that we had on Sycamore Street this year was as a result of pedestrians crossing where, outside the crosswalk area. I did contact Department of Public Works. They are working on ongoing striping along the Sycamore Avenue-Carter to try to enhance the, the visibility down there. I am meeting Monday with the traffic, Bucks County Traffic, young lady that runs the Bucks County Traffic Agency for Bucks County, to come up with some type of other ideas or suggestions. I want to see if she has some flyers. We can put them in the store businesses down there. I visited a couple stores myself down there, trying to mitigate any future problems. But it comes down to education of the public, so the public has to know that they can't cross outside of a crosswalk. In a crosswalk, the cars are supposed to yield to them. The additional signage, if you're talking lighted elements, that runs into a cost factor for the township, and that regards, involves ongoing maintenance and also a liability factor. If the bulb burns out and it's not replaced in the timely manner, it could come back to bite you. So it's, it's a managed approach, but I think education is the best way to go at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
You too.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the board met an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss matters of pending litigation and collective bargaining. And that's all I have under my report.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Can you be more specific about what was discussed at this executive session? I think we discussed that. I think we discussed that.
I will defer to the solicitor.
Matter of litigation concerned, the Toll Brothers' proposed development that is in the Court of Common Pleas right now, thus a matter of active litigation, and the collective bargaining dealt with the firefighters' contract.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Mack, minutes, bills list, and reports.
There are two minutes to approve. One, from our last meeting, if I can open my page here. So I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October eighteen, twenty-twenty-one budget presentation meeting.
So moved.
So second.
Second.
Motion second.
Any questions from the board, from the public? Okay, well, I guess I wasn't here on this one, right? Okay, I wasn't here. Okay. I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one Board of Supervisors meeting.
Motion of a second.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Regarding the bills list, I make a motion that we approve payment of the bills on our November tenth, twenty-twenty-one bills list totaling two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and six cents.
Have a motion of a second on the bills list?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the board?
I had a question, page four, mainly for consulting American Rescue Plan, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. What could they have consulted about for four hundred and twenty-nine dollars?
They were providing us with guidance on how we need to file the report that has since been moved to be due in the end of April. So they were doing initial sort of back and forth with the filing of that report and how the loss of revenue will be calculated.
Hasn't there been new guidance about how to file that? I was just reading something from PSAT's, an email, I guess.
Yes, the guidance with the actual filing requirements is still being developed, and it'll be part of the final rule once it's issued.
Okay. That's all I have.
Interfund transfer.
Oh, you didn't pass. I made the motion, was there a second?
A second. Any further questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Sorry about that, John.
No problem. I make a motion to approve interfund transfers according to the November tenth, twenty-twenty-one bills list totaling two hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board on interfund transfers from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you, John. We go into our second session of public comment. Anyone who would like to make a comment, please come up to the podium and speak your piece.
My name is Maureen Triber, and I have a question about the comment that was made earlier this evening about an executive session with Toll or to discuss the Toll settlement. At the last supervisors' meeting, there was some discussion about having an executive session with the Board of Supervisors, Delancey Court Representatives, perhaps the PennDOT and Newtown Grant. And I'm just wondering, where do we stand on that? Is there still plans to have an executive session, or will this be put on the agenda for a public session at a public meeting?
Mr. Sanders, you want to handle it?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. The township received a revised settlement plan from Toll Brothers that shows an access, the loan access to the development at North Drive. There is no municipal drive tie-in or access proposed by that proposed settlement plan. The board reviewed the plan, and a letter will be going out, probably from Toll Brothers, at Toll Brothers' expense, to all of the surrounding property owners who received notice of the last settlement plan, plus additional residents in certain several developments, several subsections of Newtown Grant, with a reference to that plan, and it will be placed on the website. No decision has been made on that revised plan, but that is the general gist of the executive session.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I want to thank you for listening to our comments and putting the safety of all of the Newtown Township residents, keeping that in the forefront of the decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comment?
John DiApril, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. I was hoping one of your guys would have walked that again like he did last meeting, because we don't like hearing him. But anyhow, I know it's not you guys, but, you know, it goes up county and higher. I mean, the election, what a mess. It's over a week now, and still don't know the outcome of some of the positions, mainly our half of Newtown, the school board position. And, you know, took them a week and they narrowed it down to one vote. I guess they couldn't cheat and get any more than that, but that's the way it seems. My opinion, and a lot of others too, a lot of other people's opinions too. I mean, it's ridiculous what they have to go through now. You guys have any influence with the state people, get ahold of them and tell them they got to change it. I know who's kind of made, like some representatives say, under duress because of COVID and all that stuff, but it's time to straighten it out. I mean, this is ridiculous. It's a week now, and you don't know. One of the members up there talked about, you know, Sycamore Street and the lights at Channel Hall. Well, being an employee at Channel Hall for almost two years, I mean, those lights don't work. You know, it's ridiculous, you're there, the cars just blow right through there. How many times I had to cross sometimes with some of the elderly residents, I mean, it's ridiculous. I've seen the police set up cars there and stuff, and, you know, it helps out, but they can't be there all the time. So lights aren't the answer for, you know, something like that, the crosswalk lights are not the answer. And like the chief said, it's going to cost the township to do that, and maintenance and all that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry.
Joe Lovey, one fifty-one North State Street. I'm from Newtown Borough, so I just wanted to give everybody else a chance to speak first. Is anybody else? Joe Lovey, one fifty-one Newtown Borough. My question's to Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lewis, Joe Lovey, we spoke back in September. I, bear with me, I stuttered a little bit, I apologize. I filled out a right-to-know. The information I was trying to obtain was fire calls, okay? Fire calls for the borough, it's always presented to us, here are the fire calls for the township, and it's everything combined. So I filled out the right-to-know back in September, and bear with me, what I specifically asked for was the breakout of NESD, which is your paid firefighters, and NFA, which are volunteers. I was a volunteer for over a decade. So I wanted to have this breakout for this year and last year. It was no problem. But September, what I received was, is the same information that I already had, and I responded back. I have all the emails here. I responded back, and I basically said, no, that's not what I need. I wanted the breakout between the paid and the volunteers. Well, I sent an email back November twenty-first, and to this day, I don't know what else to do. I filled out the right-to-know, and you're, Mr. Solicitor, you're the attorney, I have the right to get it, and I believe, Mr. Lewis, if you'd be so kind, if I could stop by probably this week, if you have a chance, I know everybody's very busy, if I could get this information. I believe it's out there, it has to be out there, because at the end of the day, I know what the volunteer calls are, but I'd just like to see all the calls for this year and last year from the paid gentleman, okay? I don't think it's unrealistic, and Mr. Lewis, if, I could give you my cellphone number, and if you could get this for me, am I being unrealistic?
Mr. Sanders, the right-to-know law does not require the township to generate a report that does not already exist, correct?
That's correct.
So the reports that you are given are the reports that exist?
Then can I, I have to then ask you these questions. If all of a sudden you want to increase taxes, saying that you're providing the borough, and I've heard all of the gentlemen up here, that you guys have provided us fire coverage under your paid people, I think personally, then, I have the right to know what are the calls, okay? If you want to charge my town for paid fire service, I think you then have the fiduciary responsibility, okay? If it's not the right-to-know, I just think from a business perspective, and I know the gentleman in the corner over there, he's an attorney, from a business perspective, and I've heard Mr. Oxley say this before, because I've watched all your meetings, I respect all you guys, but I think from a business perspective, you at least have to show me, please tell me, what are the number of calls that these paid guys make in my town that all of a sudden, that I have to fear that we've got a lot of calls coming to our town, okay? For me, I want to know a fire call. For me, I was a volunteer fireman, for me, that's dropping hose, and there's a fire, okay? This is not all of a sudden, if it's alarms, I need to know, I would like to know if it's just alarms.
Our paid firefighters don't necessarily report to a fire. We report to inspections, we report to any call that we get from the borough.
Exactly.
So every time our paid firefighters step into the borough, the taxpayers of Newtown Township are paying for them to come into the borough.
Bear with me.
Now, you don't think we should be compensated for it? I think we should.
Bear with me, Mr. Calabro.
Let me finish. So it's not just fires, it's everything else. Any business that is in Newtown Borough has to have an inspection.
You're absolutely correct.
It's our truck that comes in, it's our firefighters, which mandatorily, according to the contract, we have to have four of them on a fire truck that come into the borough to do that. Now, I believe, last meeting, I did ask the chief if he had the time, because we do get the calls, and it says next to it Newtown Township, Newtown Borough, Newtown, if he could break it down according to township and borough. That hasn't been done, I mean, that's a time-consuming thing, but we should have that going into the future.
Let me just ask you this, it's my understanding is this, that your paid firefighters do do inspections in our town, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And what it is, is that the business people are charged for these inspections, correct? Which is correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So at the end of the day, your guys are fully compensated. When we build a structure, and I'll just give you a hypothetical example, we have a builder, or not a builder, we have a developer, Alan Smith, building something, things have to be reviewed by your paid firefighters and so forth, it's my understanding that your gentlemen are paid by that contractor, correct?
Well, they're paid by the taxpayers of Newtown Township.
No, 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 no.
Because that's where their salaries and paychecks come from.
Bear with me.
All right.
You guys pay your guys, but my understanding is this, when you guys provide a service to review their development reports and so forth, you charge the developer. When you give it, so that's yes. When you all of a sudden do an inspection, you charge the business person. The answer is yes. When there's a fire violation, you are called in, and all of a sudden, whatever they had to do, you charge the business person, correct? Yes. My then question is, is that for all the services that you have then come, for those three areas I mentioned, you've been compensated. So my question now is this, now we're talking about other calls, fire calls. We've talked about service calls, now we're talking about fire calls. So my question now is, is this, since Mr. Lewis was nice enough to tell me that since you don't generate this report, I don't have the right to get it because you don't generate it. Well, my attitude then is, is that from a community person, I'm a community person, you're a community person, could you at least show me, okay, the other calls? Truthfully, I think I have the right to know, if you come to my town, I have the right to see the volunteer fire calls and the paid fire, and the paid fire calls. And then it would be great to break it out so I could see one thing. Which calls have been compensated by our business owners, whether it was for development purposes, whether it was for reviewing, bear with me, whether it was reviewing for inspections or a violation? The other ones then are for house, false alarms, whatever it might be. So my question is, is just from a citizen and from a business person, would you guys be so kind, I know I'm wasting my time filling out the right-to-know, I apologize for wasting your time, but is it unrealistic for me to get a copy of the details of this, so that I could see what the calls are and the details of the type of calls? I don't think I'm being unrealistic, am I? I wasted my time doing the right-to-know because you guys don't develop that report. But I have to be honest with you, if going forward, which is, this is where we're going, I think it's a beautiful report, and truthfully, my thought is, is this, I'd like to see the report now, okay? Mr. Calabro, is that unrealistic? I don't think it is.
No, I'd like to see the report also, and I think I have to dispute what you're saying. I don't want to get into it.
No, 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 I don't want to either. I don't want to waste your time.
But I'll break it down, I like to break it down to simple terms.
I'm a simple guy.
It's like if I go into Starbucks.
Who?
Starbucks.
Starbucks?
Starbucks.
Okay, I couldn't hear because of the mess.
That's okay.
I apologize.
And I buy a coffee, I'm paying for that coffee, and doesn't that person giving me the coffee still get paid by Starbucks? So what you're saying is that our firefighters coming in, that they're compensated by the fee that they have to be charged to the developer or the builder or something like that. We, our firefighters, again, four of them, you're talking about salaries, and let's throw in everything. They get pensions from us, they get healthcare from us, you're talking about on that truck coming into your borough.
Excuse me, sir.
Is five hundred thousand dollars worth of manpower, okay? And you're saying that fifty dollars that they may collect off of Mr. Smith is paying for their salary.
I'm just asking you.
That's incorrect. You have, your analogy is off kilter.
No, wait, wait, I am here asking a question, and the question I came to was this, I'm not talking about Starbucks, I'm not talking about what they're being paid, that wasn't the question. I asked a simple question of this, could you please tell me the calls between the paid guys and that? That's all I asked for, okay?
And hopefully, one day, we will have that.
But wait, wait, but my question is, one day, my thought is, is this, it would be nice to see it today. The reason is this, my question is this, we're going to talk about Starbucks, you go in to buy a coffee, okay? Well, here's a question for you, Starbucks is working in my town, you go buy a coffee, correct? Should Starbucks charge me a fee then too? Because they didn't charge, they didn't charge you all the money for the coffee, but they're working in my town, and I should get charged too?
Well, I, I, I.
You didn't follow that, did you?
No, I didn't follow.
Because I didn't follow, hear me out. Because I didn't follow, hear me out, hear me out.
Yeah, yeah.
My question is this, if you guys go and do an inspection for Starbucks.
Yeah.
Whatever your costs are, to compensate them for their time, okay, to compensate for them for their time, whether it's four hours or whatever, whatever cost accounting it is, charge, charge, charge that recipient, which is the owner of that. You shouldn't be charging me because I don't own Starbucks.
Well, here's, we'll just cut to the chase. When you talk to your council, tell them to save up $5 million.
No, I.
To establish their own department, okay? I don't know how much, I have to stress this, but.
That's okay.
We're looking to get compensated for our firefighters going into the borough and doing a job for the borough. I'm not, I'm not here to.
Mr. Calabro, I would never wish to die.
Not here to go over anything that you may have.
I just wanted to know calls.
All I know is that if the borough's not satisfied with what we have to offer, we're compensating.
I am not speaking to.
They will have to, it's already been in a study that they will have to establish their own.
This is the study, correct? This is the study?
Yes.
Can I tell you something?
At the cost of $5 million.
There's a floor in the study.
Okay.
Bear with me. No, no, bear with me, bear with me. Do you know what the floor is?
You tell, go ahead.
It's $77,000 for every firefighter. What they did was, it's only mandatory to have five people, or four people, in a paid department. What they did was, they took NFPA 1720, they took the number of 15. That's the minimum number of people that you need for a volunteer department. They took that and multiplied it times $77,000 per person. That's how they came up with $5 million. Can I tell you something? That's misleading.
Well, whatever, whatever it takes to build it.
No, 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 no.
Have the borough build it.
Look, 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 look. First of all.
And then we don't have to go in there and be bothered.
Look, Mr. Calabro, please, I just, I'm not here, I'm not, I don't want to be bullied. I just asked one question.
Maybe you're bullying me. How about, should I say that?
No, 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 no. I just asked.
I'm not bullying you, I'm just saying.
Mr. Calabro, I found out today from Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
That during the right-to-know, since you don't develop the port, you don't have to give anything, okay? My question to you is this, that all of a sudden, I think from a citizen's perspective, and I am asking from a citizen's perspective, okay? I don't want an analogy of Starbucks. I don't want any of that. I only want to talk about costs. I don't want to talk about any of that. I just asked one question here very nicely. Could you please tell me the number of calls for this year and last year? That's it. Broken out by the paid guys, NESD, and the volunteers, NFA. Then what it is, is I'd just like to know the types of calls. If it's an inspection, it's inspection. That's all I've asked for. For some reason or another, we got into $5 million, which this is a wrong report, okay? All of a sudden, I didn't get into costs. I didn't get into any of that stuff. Can I tell you something? I've trained with every one of these paid gentlemen, okay? At the end of the day, Mr. Calabro, I was the oldest volunteer to join there. Actually, can I tell you something? The NFPA people, okay, I got them the 501(c)(3), okay? They weren't tax-exempt. I did it after I had a tumor removed from my brain. Warren Dallas, you know this, Mr. Dallas, was I not the oldest person to join the fire company? Hold on. And get, and get.
Make sure you can address somebody in the audience.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. But I let you, I let you know. I have all my pro-board certificates and so forth, it's a binder this thick, okay? All I could say is, I just asked for one question, and we got off on a tangent.
Right.
I just asked you one question. Please tell me the number of calls, because my thing is this, okay? I want to know the number of calls and the type of calls that we get from the paid guys and from the volunteers.
Understood.
Okay.
Don't, don't we have that, Chief, the foresight, every month you put out the numbers?
Yes.
So we do have a monthly report.
Well, that's not.
I don't think it's broken down by type of call.
It's not broken down by type of calls.
What it is, is that unfortunately, sorry, Mr. Mack, what it is, is that since there's like 120 calls, unfortunately, I don't know all the street names. If it could be sorted.
I thought it was.
It is sorted, it is sorted according to township and borough.
It's sorted by municipality.
Right.
But what it is, is I was just asking one question. Could you sort it by my municipality between NFA and paid people? The sort would be time.
Could you accept an answer?
Yes, sir. I didn't hear you.
Could you accept our answers, that we'd all like to have it? And we'll work on getting it.
Well, I have to be honest with you. In this day and age, you've got all the data, okay? You could download this in an Excel spreadsheet, and you could sort it, it takes 10 minutes. My question, my question to you is this.
You might be presuming a lot of things about that.
Sir, I have to be honest with you. I set up a finance company for BMW in 15 countries. I've done this stuff, and I've had people do it for me. But on a separate note, there's tools out there that this could be done like that.
Can we just agree that we're going to get this report? We don't have it tonight, and it will, because we want to know also.
But wouldn't we, wouldn't it be, this is what I'm confused, and I'm sorry, Mr. Solicitor.
But, but sir, you're repeating yourself over and over and over again. We know exactly what you're asking for. You've got a board that's telling you, they agree with you. They want that. It's not going to happen tonight. They're going to pursue it, and if we get it, we'll let you know. But right now, you keep attacking this board.
No, I'm not attacking.
Yes, you are. Your tone of voice is attacking this board.
My tone of voice, I apologize, my tone of voice.
And you need to back off, because you keep repeating yourself, and there's not one person up here who has spoken that you haven't cut them off while they were speaking, okay? And you're doing the same to me right now.
Mr. Solicitor, I have to be honest.
So I think the point is made. I think the board response has been made. Thank you for your comment.
I had a tumor removed from my frontal lobe, sir.
Sir, I'm sorry to hear that, but that doesn't have anything to do with the request or the information that you asked.
First of all.
Dave, calm down.
I don't understand the tone of voice. I'm trying to just speak here and just ask one question, if I could get the information.
You've asked it 17 times.
We've told you that we will get the information. When we get it, you can have that information, because it'll be public knowledge.
Okay.
We don't, we do have the information, but you don't want to break it down because you know it's, you know, and it's confusing, because it just says by municipality. We will try to get you more detail, because believe me, I want more detail of when our guys go into the, into the borough.
The detail is there, it's straight on the report. I just can't.
Okay. Does that satisfy you? I mean, I don't know.
No, actually, actually, I have to be honest with you. From a negotiation standpoint, I can't believe all of a sudden, you're going to, that you would charge another town this without seeing, my question is this, I'd like to see how many calls it is. I can't believe you would negotiate something without that.
We've had numerous meetings with the representatives of the council. We've sat down, gone over the calls many times, since maybe going back three to four years ago, we've had these conversations. So we are not unaware of the situation.
And there's more to it than percentage of time spent. You have to have, you have to pay firefighters around the clock for that 12-hour shift for five days a week, no matter what. No matter what, whether there's calls or not, we have to pay for them.
Let me know when you get the information. I appreciate it. That's what I asked for.
All right, thank you. Your glasses.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Sanders, we have need for an executive session after this meeting.
No, we don't, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment. And without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.